1.1 an action item, which is direction regarding construction of the Emeryville Center of Community Life Swimming Pool. Cindy, are you doing?
Actually, yeah.
Pedro.
Yes.
Yeah, Pedro, that's right. Pedro, come on up, so we can see you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I wanted to briefly add a few items here in regards to the staff report before you tonight on the request for the direction on the construction of the ECCL swimming pool project. As you will hear tonight, there will be some future impacts to the aquatics programs and services if the deck is reduced. But what's being considered with the renovation of the pool was to try to build it right, since this is the only pool in Emeryville that will offer aquatic programs and services to the community. Those programs and services will include swim lessons for infants to adults, seniors, health and fitness classes, exercise classes for all ages, lab swim, public swim, community events and special events, camps, swim teams, specialty classes, and private rentals. Some of the impacts that could happen with the deck being reduced includes some emergency and safety concerns with backboarding and egress and relocating some gates and emergency exits, reduction in circulation, spectators, less family and friends, encourage and support participants engaged in programs. So tonight, we're asking council to give direction to staff and Swinerton's project owner representative, John Baker, who will be coming up to do the PowerPoint presentation. He represents both the city of Emeryville and the Emeryville Unified School District in the ECCL construction project. He will go over some information that will, in more detail regarding the impacts, and be able to answer any questions here tonight. So I'll call up Mr. Baker to come up and do the presentation.
Hello, Mr. Baker.
Oh, there we go. Good evening. I'm here tonight to present along with Mr. Jimenez regarding the pool deck extent. I want to point out that the issue brought forth to you tonight is the extent of the pool deck replacement so that the project can accommodate a future bike path. So we have, we're presenting two alternates, one which staff has recommended, and we're looking for council to give us guidance, so we know exactly what the configuration of the pool deck will be, so it can accommodate the future bike path. So right here, you'll see, Mr. Jimenez just spoke to these aquatic programs and services, and I'm not sure if you want to elaborate any further on these items here.
I think I hit it.
Okay.
We know these.
These are the program services currently offered by the pool. The Emeryville's general plan includes a class, what's called a Class 1 bike path at the west edge of the ECCL site. So you can see in this diagram, the ECCL site is the square with the arrow pointing to it, and there is a, to the west, there's a line there. At the far western edge of the ECCL site, the general plan calls for Class 1 bike path. A Class 1 bike path is an eight-foot-wide paved path with two feet of decomposed granite on either side, so it's a total of 12 feet wide, two feet decomposed granite, eight feet pavement, and two feet decomposed granite. There are two alternates that we're looking at here. The first, which is what staff is recommending, is as follows: is that the existing pool deck size would remain and replace, be replaced with new concrete. The pool deck occupancy would be 334 people, and that's based on how the code calculates persons per square foot. So the code has a certain number of people per square foot for a pool deck, and so you just do the calculation, and 334 is what would be allowed. It requires also certain egress paths, and so, once you take the egress paths away, you're left over with a certain amount of square footage, and in this case, 334 is the code calculation. It provides a 16-foot-wide area for seating at the wide part of the deck, at the westernmost edge of the deck. It would include the seismic retrofit of existing pool sound wall, that's already in the project, and would allow for a future bike path, five feet wide at the pool sound wall, so between the pool sound wall and the property line. Looking at this diagram here, you'll see the green zone is the area of the future bike path, and you'll see the pool deck is shown. Here is the existing pool deck size. I want to point out that you'll see at the far left-hand side that there are three existing redwood trees which would need to be removed when the bike path is put in in the future. That's actually not an issue for the discussion today, but that's what that shows there. And the section here shows how the pool, the bike path will be configured as it goes past the pool. You'll see the existing sound wall to remain, the new sound wall reinforcement, and that's required by code to bring the structural integrity and performance of that sound wall up to current codes. That is part of what the FEMA dollars are funding, by the way. You'll see then the bike path, which would be five feet wide, and then the fence shown there, which is the fence on the property line between ECCL and Emery Bay Village. The other alternate is as follows: alternate two, the future pool deck size would be reduced by 857 square feet. We would replace the concrete, the new, the pool deck concrete, we would replace only up to that line, so we would not be paying for 857 square feet of concrete that would be removed later when the bike path goes in. The future pool deck occupancy would be reduced to 229 from its current 334. The future area for seating would be reduced from 16 feet to eight feet wide. We would still have to do the seismic retrofit of the existing wall, so it would comply with code for occupancy of the pool until that wall will be taken out for, once the bike path is installed in the future. I want to point out here also that the bike path is, has been approved by council as Phase 2 of the ECCL project. Phase 2 includes one new building, called Building F, which would be used for additional city and district programs, and also installation of the bike path. It's not included in the current project, we're just trying to determine the extent of the pool deck replacement, so we can accommodate the bike path in the future. Here's alternate two, it shows, you'll see the green zone is the full 12-foot width, that red line is the existing pool wall, which will be demolished, and then a new wall would be constructed at the edge of the pool deck. And you'll see the section below shows you what the section would be all the way through the site, where you would have that new pool sound wall, which is the beige-colored line, the 12-foot bike path, and then the existing retaining wall and wall along the dividing line between ECCL and the Emery Bay Village. So the swimming pool impacts, again, alternate one, which is what staff is recommending, is it would maintain the existing pool deck size and its occupancy 344. Alternate two, is in the future, when you put the bike path in, you would remove that wall and replace the sound wall at the pool, reduce the deck size by 857 square feet, and then the pool occupancy would reduce to 299. This kind of, these diagrams are a little more close-up, that show the detail of alternate one and two. Alternate one, you'll see that band of seating area between the pool and the sound wall. Code requires you maintain eight feet from the edge of the pool to a seating area, so you have to have eight feet all the way around that. That's what kind of constricts what you can, where you can have a seating area. Alternate two, where you would build the 12-foot-wide bike path and do a new sound wall, shows the narrower band of where you could have seating. The future impacts to aquatic programs and services, deck is reduced, and I would invite Mr. Jimenez to elaborate upon these. The emergency safety concerns with backboarding and egress, the need to relocate gates and emergency exits that were going to stay where they are now, we have to pull those in. Reduction in circulation, reduction in spectators, less family and friends, encourage and support participants engaged in programs, reduction of seating picnic tables on the, that's to say, the west side of the deck, and then the quality of experience is decreased for participants of programs, because there's less room on the smaller deck. I just want to have a brief discussion of the work to date in the 12-foot bike path zone. What was done is the field was adjusted to accommodate the 12-foot-wide bike path at the field, this is away from the pool. The athletic field safety zones were minimized, so that we could do that down to the minimum some locations. And so what is going to be installed along that part, not at the pool, is 12 feet of basically recycled wood chips. So we're just basically putting a header board in, and then wood chips there, so that we're minimizing the cost we're putting into that zone, so in the future, when the bike path goes in, we're not putting much of plant and irrigation and things of that nature that you have to take out. We're doing just the minimum, so that we can have some ground cover there, which is just basically recycled wood chips. Through July 15th, we've graded along the west sides of the site, so that's all graded now, what the grade is going to be, not for a bike path, but for the wood chip area. We've, the seismic strengthening of that existing wall is in progress, the footings are in, and the holes are drilled where the steel reinforcement columns will go, but those have not yet been installed, although they will be soon, in August, actually. So we have approximately 20,000 of work that's in place for that, in that whole zone, that would have to be then taken out in the future. Work to complete under the current ECCL scope is completing that wall, seismic strengthening, landscaping, which is the wood chips, and fencing, the fencing that goes between that area and the playfield. So approximately $80,000 more to complete. That $80,000 includes $35,000 to replace the pool deck in that zone that would be reduced if alternate two is selected. So hopefully that makes sense, and I can elaborate on that if anyone has got questions. Again, the staff recommendation is to proceed with the pool deck replacement and retrofit of the pool sound wall, the entire deck replaced with its current size, that the future bike path be designed so that the southern portion, that should actually say the, of the southern portion of the bike path, because of that site, it runs on the western side, that the part behind the pool be narrowed to fit in the existing space between swimming pool and fence along the ECCL property line. So you have a five-foot-wide bike path at that existing wall, and the staff recommendation is that this would benefit the greater good of the community, serving bicyclists, pedestrians, and community members who utilize the aquatics program. And that will open up to questions, and then ask council to give direction to staff on alternate one or alternate two.
Okay, questions?
I have a couple. Yeah. So the, what is the depth of the pool? Because right now, it's 11 feet, and it was 11 feet in the deep end before. What's it going to be?
It'll be three, like, three and a half feet to six feet, eight inches.
Okay, and that, and folks can use that to learn to dive and to do competitive swimming and everything.
We would still have diving blocks on the deep end side, so they could do competitive swimming.
And then how long is it, is that, is the length appropriate for swim meets?
Yeah, there's a 25-yard pool, six lanes, 25 yards.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, is there public comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Richard Ambro, and I live at 1264-64th Street. I'm not a bicyclist, I'm a pedestrian, but I'd like to see the bike path reduced at the southern end sufficiently to allow the deck to be built at its maximum and still have the bikes pass by. That would mean that you can't barrel down that path as fast as you might like, you would need signage to caution the bicyclists that it's getting narrower, but it should be possible, and I would urge you to choose the first option. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Rodney.
Hi. Hello to all on the council, mayor. I was asked to take a look at this again. I know I, I'm a member of the ECCL Citizens Oversight Committee, and one of the very important things that hasn't been addressed is a comment from the Public Safety Department on this bikeway, looking at all the possibilities of the use, the uses of it, and also, I've seen in various cities where public ways have become homes for the homeless, or, and I haven't seen too much of that in Emeryville, which is wonderful, but I was wondering if the Public Safety Department has any comments on this bikeway, or I hope they may address it in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Well, to the previous speaker, yes, a lot of comments were made regarding the public safety of this, and we were told that this bike path would be the site of gang rapes, that was Ms. Davis told us that, Councilwoman Davis, and drug dealing and pedophile activities and all kinds of nefarious criminal activity is going to happen here, but the people of Emeryville, through their council, rejected all those arguments, and we decided, no, it's just a bike path, and we want to have bike paths in Emeryville. So we've already had that fight, and the others, the public safety freak outside presented their arguments, and those arguments were found lacking. So we are going to have a bike path here eventually, someday, I hope. One thing that wasn't made clear to me by the presentation is, so I guess a regulation bike path is eight feet with two feet on either side of the decomposed granite, so that makes 12. The, Mr. Baker, presenter, said that's going to be shrunk down to five feet, I presume, still with the two feet on either side, so that would be five, seven, eight, nine, nine feet, I presume. Where's Mr. Baker? Is that accurate?
No, it's five feet, it'd be five feet total.
Five feet total, okay.
The existing dimension.
Wow. Okay, I can't support that, that's not really a bike path. You know, we need to have, make this town for everybody, for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for swimmers, for the school. It's really unfortunate, it has to be so tight. However, we were warned about this. We were warned that the Center for Community Life site is too small to fit everything that we need on there, and now here, the geese are coming home to roost here, the cows coming home to roost, or likewise, you could say. So five feet is just, I think that's entirely too narrow. I think we should, I mean, I understand why the pool deck is a problem, but maybe there could be a third alternative, maybe you should ask Mr. Baker to explore a third alternative. Five feet seems far too constrained, and it just seems like it would render the path sort of worthless. Thank you.
For me, I think it all comes down to cost. I think my big concern is the project is running at a very tight cost, and we've already had a huge increase in the cost of the pool, which I was hoping would be discussed this evening, and so I want to remind council members that that is something that's looming with this pool redesign. You know, we came up with a very low estimate, and at our last board meeting with the school board, there was a lot of talk about, we have a lot of flexibility in what we decide to do going forward with the deck and with the pool, that's okay, you know, and even the depth of the pool, and so I think, you know, a third alternative is a possibility. We really, given the cost, went from 700,000 to 200, to 2 million, I think we have some flexibility about how we do this pool, and I think what's really important to me as a community member, that we do this pool correctly. I look forward to using it for years to come, and I hope to use the bike path as well, so I think it's important that we look at all possibilities. And I, just this evening, I'm concerned about competitive swimming at 25 meters, we're going to be doing a flip turn in three and a half feet, is that safe? I'm just thinking of long and lean swimmers, so I posed that question, is three and a half feet for a flip turn?
I think they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can.
The pool that I swim in is shallower, and they do that all the time.
Okay, good, I just, you know, thank you.
That's cool. My recollection when this came up, and it was fairly thoroughly vetted at the Bike Pet Committee, although it looks like now they're saying it's okay, but my recollection was that the police department had said that if you're going to have the bike path, that it really needed to be the same width, because if it's, if the pool goes out, and I mean, it'd be great to have the larger decks, I mean, it's sort of a difficult problem. If it's narrow at the 47th Street, and then they don't really have clear visibility when they patrol the area, and, but the other thing was that, because it's a fairly long block between 47th and 53rd Street, they said they really needed access for police cars in case there was a problem or an emergency, to bring an ambulance in, so, I don't know, that was, that was where I think everybody sort of got stuck with the whole thing, that, you know, the pool would like to have the wider deck, and, but that if it was, if it was narrowed down, that it would be a public safety problem, but I don't know, just for what it's worth.
All right. What is the council's direction here? I favor the first alternative myself, to, in order...
Which alternative?
The first one, where it keeps the pool deck and narrow the path.
I support that.
Can we talk a little bit about this? It's, you know, I'm not arguing one way or the other at this point, but having visited the site, if we keep the sound wall where it is, the bike path is, I would call it a dark dungeon-like passage, that, you know, if anyone has any fears of public safety concerns, that that's something that I think would promote that idea. From what I understand from Mr. Baker, a sound wall is being created north of the pool, along the duration of the existing fence that abuts the very tall redwood trees that are at the condo development on the other side, and if we were to keep the pinch point, I would make the suggestion that we keep the sound wall, and we extend that planned sound wall down to 47th Street, and have a much, you know, lighter fence between the bike path and the pool, which would create more of a sense of connection between the bike path and the pool, and not to have people, you know, on the bike path leering at people at the pool, because it doesn't have to have the same visibility as something that's completely transparent, but it could remove the feeling that you're isolated and alone if you're on that path, and let's say there's a fear of bad actors, I think that fear would be greatly alleviated. And my question to Mr. Baker, and I apologize for not asking you this specifically before, but I would like to know if there are any efficiencies to be taken advantage of by extending that sound wall work along that fence.
Yeah, I think it's a, and we did the site visit today, let me go back to that plan, but what Ms. Martinez is saying is that what you could do is a, sort of a, an alternate, a different, an alternate to alternate one, or an augmentation, I guess, is that this right here is the existing sound wall. What I believe you're saying is, is that when the bike path goes in, right now, the way this works is that the environmental document requires a sound wall between ECCL and Emery Bay Village. So what we're doing is, and I can go back to the other drawing, actually, what we're doing is we're installing a new steel and timber sound wall from this point here, all the way across to 53rd Street. And what could be done when the bike path goes in is you could take out the existing sound wall, extend that sound wall along here, and that what you'd have, look in this diagram, is you'd have a sound wall here, which provides the sound isolation for Emery Village, and you could put a more transparent fence here, something that would allow a visual connection from the pool deck into the bike path and vice versa, so that people on the pool deck could see there's a bike path there and vice versa. It could be an architectural grill or something along that, rather than this...
Baker, what's the, what's the difference in grade between the pool deck and the path?
So this varies, it goes from zero, at this point here, they're at the same elevation. When you get down to here, it's about three feet, so this section here is drawn near its greatest depth. The pool deck is level, and this, the site slopes downward this way, so it's between about zero and three feet.
Sorry. Is that where the disabled access is or was before?
Yes, that's where it was before, that's exactly right.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, Diane, to lighten it up.
Yeah, and to mitigate any fear about there being, you know, a tunnel for bad things to happen, and I think, you know, it would feel as though you had eyes on you if you were on the bike path, but not necessarily if you were at the pool, it could be constructed in such a way that you wouldn't necessarily have to feel eyes on you from people going by.
Yeah.
I really like that idea as well. I think our future should have the bike path be not 12 feet wide the whole way, but 10 feet, and I've ridden on a lot of 10-foot-wide bike paths, just like before, with, you know, eight feet of paving, but a foot on either side instead of two feet of DG. And then in the future, we might choose to keep 10 feet instead of 12, it would give us, not the same as alternative two, would give us two additional feet in depth, and Diane, I believe you visited the site and said there's a chance that there's another area on the north side of the pool that could open up and give us about 400 square feet of additional space around the pool, which would make it so that there would be a difference that wouldn't be so extreme between capacity in alternative one and alternative two, it would be a capacity of about halfway in between those two.
Would you mind pulling up a bigger slide that shows that area where the gate would move?
Yeah, I don't, but this, there's a little area right here, there's, you'll see this, there's an eight-foot-wide path, that's the required egress, after the eight feet wide to exit from the deck, but this, there's a rectangular area here that is a, it's about 12 feet by about, I think, 36 feet right there, you could actually do more pool deck there. It's not really visually adjacent to the deck, but it would allow for a seating area here, and that would, if one did that, you could make up for, you could extend a seating area in this area here, it's not, currently, this is a landscaped area. When it's complete, it'll be a landscaped area.
All right, well, there isn't a resolution per se, but I know you're asking for a...
Well, so what I'm, let me finish what I'm saying. What I'm proposing is that the deck be allowed to be its current width right now, but you take provision so that the path would eventually be not 12 feet wide, but 10 feet wide, so in other words, your pool deck would go out to that area, then, and then it would stop where the 10-foot-wide path in the future would be, and in the interim, the pool deck would not have the same surface beyond that point. It might have its existing surface, or if you need to add something, some inexpensive temporary solution to level the new deck with the existing deck.
I'm not sure how functional that little extra square is.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that it not be made so that the demolition in the future costs a total fortune, but you design it so that it is 10 feet wide, the future path to where the new decking ends, and you allow maybe a saw cut, so that it can be demoed in the future efficiently, but still be utilizable until Phase 2 is built. So in other words, I'm supporting Diane's idea about building the sound wall all the way, having the lighter, you know, maybe baffling, but still lets light through to the future path, but just that we design for a path that's not 12 feet in the future, but 10 feet wide.
Do you feel like you've got enough direction from us, favoring the lighter wall and...
Well, again, the lighter wall will be in the future, we'll leave the existing wall there, so that would be a future action by the council to the design of that bike path. But what we're looking for is, we're specifically looking for direction from council on what the extent of pool deck replacement is. Do we go all the way to the existing? Do we pull back eight feet to allow for the full 12-foot-wide bike path? Do we go ahead and replace it with a construction joint, so that some of it could be removed affecting...
effectively later, that's the direction we're looking for.
Yes, construction joint, but not from eight, eight feet in, but six feet in.
Other people come up, we have, we still have a lengthy agenda here, so I'm not sure...
Yeah, Mayor Hackett, I have a question for the school board, could, could you come forward? The school board guy? What does the school board say about this?
You know, I'm only one individual, so I can't speak for the whole board, so I don't...
I mean, have they taken any action, or given any direction?
We knew this was on your agenda for this evening, and so we said to Mr. Baker, we're going to wait and see what you guys were saying. One of the big concerns for us, we were looking at cost overrides, and whether we're going to replace the whole deck, and, and so, you know, for me personally, I'm more concerned of where this cost overrun came from, and, you know, when Mr. Baker presented to us a few weeks ago, he intimated that it was in discussions with staff about the changes from what the original plan for the pool was, to what the current plan is with the filtration system, the decking, and things like that, so we're still waiting to sort of hear back from you guys, and again, this is not what I was expecting to hear this evening, expecting more discussion on why it's costing 2 million instead of 700,000, and so we're at that impasse of whether we just go with the cheapest possible plan, which is to keep the existing deck as is, with cuts in it, you know, and patched, versus replacing the whole deck.
You're hitting on, on my concern. Michael, what does the MOU say about who has the ultimate ability to direct the construction? Is it the school board, is it the joint school board and city council, or who has the ultimate accountability and responsibility to make the choice? It sounds to me, Christian, like it's the school board.
I think that's what was said at City Schools, so...
The school board decides, yeah. So there, it's the ultimate...
So all you're looking, the school board has it, right?
Yeah.
So all you're looking for here now is what the city council prefers, it has no arm behind it.
Yeah, this would be advisory.
It's just advisory. I think we should all be clear on that.
I'm, I'm fine with the, the, the more narrow bike path. My concern from the get-go was that we not build the deck out and then remove a portion of the tech as we put the bike path down, right? So I didn't want to build something to then remove it later on, so if we vote on the five feet and the deck gets built out to that level, and then we don't have to destroy something that we've just paid to build, paid a lot of money to build, that's, that's, that's my preference.
I also agree with that.
That's my, that's my concern.
Yeah.
I just don't want to build it and then rip it up.
I agree with, with that preference as well.
I'm fine with that as well, but I think I expressed my concern for future, for phase two, that's not the conversation we're having now, but for phase two, I, that, having visited the site, that's my vision for making that path more viable.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a motion, what's the direction?
Well, there's no, it's no formal motion, but there's a sense of the council.
Can you take something back to the...
That, that allows to then take it to the board, what?
Okay, so, so council is basically saying, we're okay with the first alternative, but to keep, uh, phase two construction in mind for that lighter sound wall, when that's, gets, gets built, and the potential, I guess, maybe to extend the deck out to that little square out to the side that Scott was saying.
Oh, okay, so we're looking at, like, we're trying to scope out the pool deck, so take alternate one, we're replacing the entire pool deck, and it would, you would now, do you take that, that part of the pool deck in the future, if you, or, I'm sorry, alternate one envisions a narrower bike path in the future with maybe some of the design changes that Ms. Martinez spoke to, correct?
I just do not want to build it and then take it out.
Right.
Even though a control joint would cost you virtually nothing.
We could certainly put a control joint in.
So I say, let's put a control joint in at six feet in, at no cost to the city, for we might change our mind in the future and want to have a wider bike path, and at no cost, we have the option.
Yeah, but except then that degrades the utility of the pool.
No, it doesn't.
You could, it would allow you the option to make that choice.
Oh, it would?
I think that the differences here, well, it makes it easier to cut the concrete, instead of, it, it, putting a joint in allows you to take that concrete out for the pool, the, the bike path, I think the question is what dimension that is, is it accommodate the 12-foot path, the 10-foot path, as you speak of, where does that line go? That would give us direction.
But that's at the expense of the pool deck, right?
No, no, it's not at the expense of the pool deck, it's just a control joint, that's all.
Do we finish the decking all the way to the sound wall, replacing that still?
Yes, but in, but installed in that would be a control joint, that's all, so it would just be an option for the future at no cost.
Right, so I guess that's...